Thank you.
Member of you.
How you wanted.
Wifi guest, or town hall guest. Yeah, and then when you're up, I'll just promote you to panelist and you share your screen. It should be easy.
Twenty seven, twenty twenty five, at the Cumberland Planning Board to order. First things first, we have a new member, Mr. Bill Zuck. And at this point, Mr. Salvatore will swear you in.
So, Mr. Zuck, if you'll stand and just repeat after me, right hand. Okay. I state your name.
I, Bill Zuck.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And obey the laws of the United States of America.
And obey the laws of the United States of America.
And the state of Rhode Island.
And the state of Rhode Island.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the Town of Cumberland.
And ordinances of the Town of Cumberland.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Planning Board Member.
The duties of the Office of Planning Board Member.
There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you. Welcome. So your official duty is roll call. Mr. Zuck.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Butler.
Here.
Mr. Scoundrel.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Bush. Ms. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Ganzosha.
Here.
Mr. Costa.
Here.
Item number two is approval of the planning minutes of January thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Other official corrections or deletions. If none do I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting. As written.
Um, second.
Good.
Motion by Mr. Reese, second by Mr. Zuck. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes happy. Item number three, public hearing minus subdivision unified development review preliminary plan. Owner applicant is Michael Silva. Project name, one four eight Bryant Street. Location, one four eight Bryant Street. Assesses plat nine, lot four two six. Uh, zoning R one with public water and public sewer. The applicant proposes to subdivide the subject property into two lots with one pre-existing house on each. The project requires waivers for minimum lot size and setbacks. Mr. Morica.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, at your meeting on November seventh, twenty twenty four, the board reviewed a proposed ordinance that introduced new special use permit criteria that would enable properties with more than one house on a lot to be subdivided so that each house would be on its own lot. The board recommended favorably to the town council. Um, and on February fifth of this year, town council adopted the ordinance, twenty four twenty six A. There are about eighty or so properties in town with more than one house on a lot. Um, and the item before you tonight, uh, at one forty eight Bryant is one of those, which has two houses on one lot. Um, while drafting this ordinance, we, we knew that there would be some dimensional variances that would be required um, to create, that would create some non-conformities in order to create um, a greater conformity of having one house per lot. In this case, the applicant requires variance from minimum lot size. Twenty-five thousand square feet is required. Uh, one of the new lots is about nineteen thousand square feet and the other is just under twenty-five thousand square feet. Uh, a rear yard setback variance is also required. Um, as the new lot line is twenty feet from an existing garage where twenty-five feet is required. But special use permit criteria gives the planning board discretion to modify these dimensional requirements if the applicant has made a reasonable attempt to meet the requirements. In this case, the planning department believes the applicant has made that reasonable effort. With regard to lot size, um, it's just not mathematically possible to create two twenty-five thousand square foot lots. And with regard to the, with regard to the garage setback, the applicant drew the proposed new lot line um, in a logical place, essentially down the middle of the property. So the planning department finds that the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And we recommend a vote to approve the special use permit and then a vote to approve the minor subdivision.
For the record, please note that Mr. Bush has entered the chambers at seven thirty-five P M. Does the board have any questions or comments for Mr. Morica relative to this item? Thank you. Uh, is the applicant or is representative present? Okay. Do you have anything else to add at this point? Do you have anything else to add? Please. Michael Silva. You were saying? Oh, anything that you want to add to the presentation that Mr. Morica gave us? Oh, no, I've just been hoping to split this property for quite a while now. Okay. That's it. Okay, thank you. Yep. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion regards to one forty eight Bryant Street that we approve the special use permit based on the finding of facts in the planning department's memo to the planning board dated February eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
I have a motion by Mr. Butler, do I have a second? Sign by Mr. Bush, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion regards to one forty eight Bryant Street that we approve the preliminary plan unified development review as the application is consistent with the goals and purposes of the comprehensive plan based on the finding of fact in the planning department's memo to the planning board dated February eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
Board, I have a motion by Mr. Butler, do I have a second? Second. Second by Mr. Scoundrel, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes yes, motion carries.
All set, good luck.
Painless. Item four, public hearing waiver request. The applicant is Eric Yagan, Vicon Properties, project name, the Preserve at Haunting Hill. Location Meadowbrook Drive, assesses plat thirty-five, lot one eighty-eight, zoning R three with public water and public sewer. The applicant seeks a waiver from the land development and subdivision regulations to not construct sidewalks within the residential development. Uh, this item will be continued to the March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty five meeting. Mr. Morica, is there anything else to add at this point?
No, um, there's just a public notice issue, so we're gonna have to continue to the March meeting.
Okay. Board have any questions? Hearing none, uh, Mr. McDonald? Do you have a question?
I have a. I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, as I've done consistently for a long time now, I'm opposed to allowing developments without.
Mr. Chairman, I, that, that's not appropriate at this time until you hear the, the request.
I didn't hear that it was being continued.
It's being continued.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay. Okay. Um, I have a motion.
No motion.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue to the March meeting.
I have a motion by Mr. Butler. Second by Ms. Reese, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Chair votes yes, motion carries. Item number, item number five, public hearing, major land development master plan. Owner applicant Cumberland School Department, project name BF Norton Elementary School. Location, three six four Broad Street, assesses plat three, lots one fifty-four, one fifty-five, one sixty-nine. Zero Broad Street, assesses plat lots one seventy-six, one eighty-three, one ninety-two. Uh, zero Chambers Street, assesses plat three, lots three oh one. Um, zero Kilborn Street, assesses plat three, lot one eighty-two. Zoning R is R one with public water and, uh, public sewer. The applicant seeks to build a new BF Norton Elementary School in a different location on the current campus and remove the existing building. And at this point, I am going to turn the meeting over to, um, Mr. Costa as I have recused myself from this particular item.
I will be recusing myself also.
Okay.
So, just for the record, um, with regard to Mr. Kootu, um, we, this is a recusal as a matter of like belts and suspenders because we don't know if he should, he has to recuse. But for tonight, he's doing it as a precaution. If we find that, um, you know, after talking to the Ethics Commission, that he can participate, he might participate at future meetings. I just want to say that for the record.
Mr. Costa. Okay. Good. Again, it's a public hearing, minor subdivision, unified development review, preliminary plan. Whoops, that's the wrong one. The applicant, uh, School Department. Cumberland School Department, BF Norton again. Location, three sixty-four Broad Street, assesses plat three lots one fifty-four, one hundred fifty-five, one hundred sixty-nine. Zero Broad Street, assesses plat three, lots one seventy-six, one hundred eighty-three, one hundred ninety-two. Chambers Street, zero Chambers Street, assesses plat three, lots three zero one. Zero Kilborn, zero Kilborn Street, assesses plat three, lot one hundred eighty-two. Zoning in R one with public water and public sewer. Applicant seeks to build the new BF Norton Elementary School in a different location on the current campus and remove the existing building.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Morica.
So, the original BF Norton School was built in eighteen eighty-nine and substantially renovated in nineteen ninety-four. Uh, among Cumberland's elementary schools, uh, this one will be the last to be upgraded. Uh, among the existing problems are accessibility issues, insufficient classroom space, and poor traffic circulation. The current enrollment of three hundred and seventy-four students is anticipated to grow to five hundred and seventy-five. The new school is proposed to be built behind the existing building, uh, which will be a modern facility that will provide collaborative learning. Um, I'm not gonna go into a lot of the project-specific details and leave that to the consultants, but a couple of things to point out. Uh, the existing school will remain, will remain operational during the two-year construction period. Uh, one issue that has been addressed during the design phase was the new building's location in proximity to neighbors along Forest Avenue. Um, they have since, during the design, moved the building further away, further to the south from the Forest Avenue property, so now it's about a hundred and seventy feet, uh, from those properties. In terms of traffic, the traffic study concluded that during the morning drop-off and afternoon pickup, there will be no significant delays on Broad Street and the level of service, which is on a scale of A to F, was a C, which is an acceptable level of stable traffic flow. Uh, on the site internally, there will be a long, uh, loop around the building to get cars off the street and accommodating, to accommodate waiting vehicles during the afternoon pickup. The Veterans Memorial behind the school will be relocated to a more prominent place on Broad Street. And the entirety of the site incorporates a lot of landscaping to soften the site and integrate it with Broad Street. Uh, moving forward into preliminary plan, one of the main issues, uh, the engineers are looking into is site drainage and that will be addressed, um, at the next phase of preliminary, as well as a, a lighting plan to ensure that lighting does not project off the site. So overall, the planning department finds that the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan and we recommend approval of the master plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here to, to speak on the item on our agenda? If you'll come up. Come up to the stand and state your name, please.
Hi, I'm Amory Andrade, Senior Project Manager at Colliers Engineering and Design. We have a presentation that we'd like to go through, um, to review with the committee.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm gonna need it in, I'm gonna need more room up there, for sure.
Okay.
Okay, ready to go.
Again, um, so, as I mentioned, Amory Andrade, um, Senior Project Manager from Colliers. Um, we are excited this evening to be here with you to present the new BF Norton Elementary School project. I'm joined with my design and construction team, so AI three architects and consigli construction. We also have some of our other consultants from the design team, Traverse Architects, Vertex Engineering, as well as, um, PAR, sorry about that. So this evening, what we would like to review with you all, um, is our project schedule provides some updates to the project. Um, the building updates, interior renderings, landscape, site, traffic studies, stormwater management, construction phasing, as well as some renderings to, um, the building. So our project schedule, we are currently in design development stage right now. Um, we will be actively transitioning into construction documents, um, and that is the last phase of design. Currently, what we're showing is, um, construction will begin in the summer of twenty twenty-five with a fall school opening of twenty twenty-seven. To date, we have had numerous meetings with the teachers, principals, staff, community members. We've gone on visioning sessions, school tours, conversations with fire, police, um, to discuss safety and security issues. Um, and we're, we're excited to, um, present, um, those updates from those conversations and how they have informed our design. So, as we mentioned, BF Norton is located at three sixty-four Broad Street, um, located in the Valley of Cumberland. Um, is proposed to be a four-track school, um, five hundred and seventy-six students, sixty-four thousand five hundred gross square feet. Um, it's a new construction project and our goal for this project is to really put teaching and learning at the center of this building, creating a place for the community, um, giving back some green space as moving the building, um, as well as alleviating traffic on Broad Street. Now I'd like to hand it over to the design team to talk about the site updates.
Hi, everyone, my name is Chris Bradner, I'm the principal of Traverse Landscape Architects. I'm gonna start us off tonight with some slides. Um, as we mentioned, we're in. B R A D N E R. And it's Chris with a K. Yep. Um, so, as it was stated, we're in design development phase. So what you're seeing here on the screen is a graphic representation of the technical documents that we're currently working on. Um, this is, uh, just to give you a visual, uh, to orient you to where we are in the site. Um, north is generally to the top and to the right a little bit. When I talk about north, I'm just talking page north for convenience. We have Broad Street running north-south on the right-hand side of the page and we have Forest Avenue on the left side, which also turns and, um, goes to the north side of the site as well. Um, we're showing the building in its newer location after public meetings. Um, and we're creating as much of the public face towards Broad Street and more of the safe playscape towards the rear of the site or north of the site. Uh, you'll see individual labels on your, on your handouts that you can look through and we can go back. How do I go to the next slide? Enter. Okay. This is the same, uh, just peeled back the rendering to show more of a block diagram so you can clearly see the public space noted by the pink, um, front entry plaza as well as the purple, which is the relocated Veterans Memorial Park. You'll see most of the parking is also on that side of the site. Towards the rear of the site, you'll see in green, blue, and orange, all of the play spaces and learning spaces. Um, and then the darker green showing the buffer along all of the, um, property lines. Uh, one thing to note there, um, can I go back one slide? No. Okay. One thing I want to note that's clear on this diagram are the access gates, um, restricting access towards the rear of the school. They're shown in the dark black, um, there's four of them, two along the left side of the building and two, one along the right side of the building and one closest to Broad Street. We're gonna take a few minutes to talk about circulation. Um, we're gonna start with, um, the service and emergency circulation and then we're gonna get into morning, daytime, and afternoon pickup and drop-off. So this diagram in red shows the emergency access throughout the site, which was vetted um, with safety and security representatives in the town and the school administration. And then in blue, you'll see access to the service area on the west side or left side of the site. Um, in this, I think, this diagram, again, it shows all the parking closest to Broad Street. On this next slide, we're gonna look at parking, um, distributed throughout the site, again, most of it towards Broad. Um, it is divided up into, uh, staff, handicapped, accessible, and visitor parking. You'll see that more closely in your handouts. Um, for a total of eighty-four parking spaces on site. Additionally, um, during a non-school day event or public event, um, there's additional parking along the access roads, um, totaling, um, and it, getting to a total of a hundred and twenty-three spaces. And then there are some parking along Broad Street on off-school hours for an additional eight spaces. This is the morning drop-off circulation, I'm gonna start with the bus circulation coming in and out of Broad Street from the same curb cut to the south, it's in the orange. You'll see the bus drop-off zone, um, accounting for six buses. The area in, the blue solid line is the parent drop-off looping, as we stated earlier, around the entire loop of the school, going all the way around the school and then dropping off, um, towards the upper, uh, northeast corner of the site. Uh, that accounts for fifty-three spaces, including the drop zone. In the morning, the gates would be open to allow for all that circulation in addition to, uh, emergency bypass circulation shown in red. In green, you'll see the pedestrian circulation entering the site, safe crossings, uh, and also, um, a more, uh, a better access from Kilborn Street, um, to the left coming into the site down an accessible walkway. Okay. This diagram shows middle of the day, um, this is a great one, showing those restricted access gates closed, um, allowing the students to use the full rear of the school, including painted games on the asphalt road, um, making most, the most use of the, of the space. Um, the access gate, uh, on the north curb cut along Broadway would generally remain open and would only be closed if the town or the school needed it closed for any reason. This would allow visitor, um, you know, access throughout the day. And then there's two access gates along the west or left side, um, just in case we didn't, we didn't want to have cars go all the way down to the service area only to have to turn around and come back. So that's just an added measure of keeping, uh, daytime traffic front and center to the parking and the main entry. This is the afternoon circulation, it's identical to the morning circulation. The buses use the same bus loop as the morning. Um, parents again stack around the rear of the school to the pickup point on the northeast side of the building and then exit back out onto Broad Street. The gates are open at this time and pedestrian circulation, um, heading home is in the same, uh, pathways as in the morning. So that was proposed circulation, um, John Shavlin from PAR Corporation is gonna talk about existing circulation.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
For the record, my name's John Shavlin, S H E V L I N, from PAR Corporation. So we were hired to go ahead and be involved in this project to look at some of the traffic circulation, uh, and, and access and movements on site. Um, so we. Um, so we looked at, uh, the existing conditions during the morning and afternoon peak hours. Uh, we did it by having people on site, looking at different areas on the site as far as how traffic moves. We also went ahead and did drone videos during the morning and afternoon pickup and, uh, drop-off and pickup period so we can go ahead and see the, the whole site at once in regards to how it's, uh, occurring. And we do have some snippets from that drone that we can show just, uh, different times of the day so folks can see what's, uh, actually occurring out there. But, you know, as Chris mentioned, you know, existing right now, all the traffic's coming in the one driveway on the south side of the building. Uh, cars are, uh, coming in, they are dropping off students at the school, along the south side of the school. Um, once they drop them off, they go to the back parking lot, they, uh, loop around, then they exit back out onto Broad Street. The maximum number of cars that we saw stacked at the school for drop-offs during the morning peak hour were five vehicles in that area. Um, there's a, you know, somebody waiting for the students to get, uh, dropped off, taking them out, so it's a quick movement. So there's really no stacking that was occurring, uh, during those occasions. Uh, the buses came sporadically on site. Uh, in the morning, there was three buses total that came on site, they came in staggered as well. And then there was four, uh, called shorter, shorter buses that came on site, which came on also sporadically. So with the proposed development that's occurring, the number of cars that would be stacking in the morning, how the operation occurs and how they're gonna be, uh, occurring on the proposed site with, uh, teachers accepting the students, it's gonna be a rolling operation. So there's more than enough, uh, stacking going on for the morning area as far as enough area in there for cars to be dropped off. We don't imagine what the operation that they're gonna have, there's gonna be more than ten cars waiting at one time for drop-off, uh, if even that, based on the way they're gonna be having this set up. Uh, the afternoon, you know, similar operation as far as, uh, uh, picking up, but what was occurring there is for the pickup, parents arrived earlier before school got out, school got released at three o'clock. And for the stacking on site, they had two inner circles that occurred for, uh, for waiting to go ahead and pick up. You had an outer, outer circle that had, I think, twenty vehicles and then the inner circle had eight vehicles, uh, queued up to pick up students on site. So how the, you know, the number of students that we have there with the three hundred and twenty-two, there's twenty-eight cars that are currently on site to pick up students at the end of the day. Uh, the traffic, well, once they came out, parents went, picked them up, brought them out to the car. All right. Gotcha. Parents would pick up the students inside the school, walk them out to the car, and then exit them and exit them out the site. Uh, the pedestrian crossings, uh, as you know, are near the, near the driveway and also across the driveway on the site. There was, um, uh, crossing guards at the site to help with the students cross during both the morning and afternoon peak hours, both intersections. Those went ahead and helped in regards to, uh, delaying the cars as far as going in and out and making it safe for the students. But what we saw, uh, basically was that really there was no traffic operations that were occurring, any kind of backups during the morning or afternoon on Broad Street. Traffic getting in and out of the site, uh, was occurring, uh, without any major backups or stacking. Uh, the cars that were being stopped were basically based on, uh, allowing students to go ahead and cross the street. So overall, we feel with this proposed site, with the amount of stacking, and Chris mentioned that it's enough for fifty-three. With those gates, if there's a need, they can also in the afternoon go ahead and additional stacking for a dual, dual lanes if need be. But the pickup, as you, uh, approach the pickup area, will still be one lane, uh, to pick up students. So they'll be able to go ahead and operate that if it's needed. But I think based on what we see for the pickup and the operations, again, we don't see any major backups that are gonna be occurring on site. We think overall, this is a much better. We think overall this is a much better operation than what's occurring during the existing conditions, what's being proposed.
Any questions on the board for, for Mr. Shalbert before he disappears?
I just had two questions. One was how many parking spots are on the current campus? And the second question was about the access gates. Are we talking about a, an arm that goes up and down? Or is it a physical gate that opens and closes?
So existing parking right now is about 65. And then the gates, they would be automatic.
So like physical, like chain link fences that open and close?
Not chain link. Like an arm that moves left to right.
So there's significantly more parking in the proposed campus than in the existing?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Proposed is 84 count.
Has there been any discussion as to during construction where all these extra cars and trucks are going to be accessing the site? Where are they, where are they going to go?
Yes, and we do have slides that speak to that. Would you like for us to go there?
Well, I don't care. We were just talking about parking and areas ways to get in and out. And I'm just curious as to morning drop-off and afternoon pickup.
Right, so for parking on site during construction, and we can go through, skip to that section for construction, safety, and phasing, we are looking at a few different ways. I'm going to introduce Suzette. She's from Consigly Construction to speak to the construction phasing.
Okay. Thank you.
Suzette Joseph with Consigly Construction. So on the screen here, you'll see the construction site. So for the course of construction, we plan to build a temporary road around the school. It'll be a portion of the road that is, that's going to remain during the school year. So we're going to build that out so that the entrance can be along Broad Street. You'll see the yellow line going around the construction project and then exiting north or south of the building where the exit is currently. And then all traffic will exit right outside of, on Broad Street. Construction parking will be within the red fence that's on the perimeter here where construction, the construction zone is. And then the areas in yellow would be teachers' parking and other parking during the course of school. Yeah, so the blue line that's going around the building is the bus circulation. That is currently how the buses are circulating today. That will remain as is. The difference here is that we are going to have the parents pick up and drop off as they will be picking up and dropping off when construction is complete. So the idea is to make the construction site as close as possible to the finished product and limiting our construction within the area in red, which is the fence line.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so let me just jump back here and I'm going to pass it over to Dean so we can just talk about safety and site separation.
So as Suzette mentioned, early on, we want to build that ring road. That's, you know, paramount to some of the success of the overall project. So initially, we'll put up some site fence so we can get that ring road begun. There's a lot of fill that has to come in for that ring road. So once that ring road is placed, then the fence line will be moved in where the construction activities will happen. In order to do that, there's a lot of safety concerns, a lot of notifications that need to go out. So we will be between signage, between a website. We will be notifying everyone of activities that are going on. Obviously, anyone coming on site is, will be core checked. We do a safety orientation with our safety department. We put together a site-specific safety manual for every job, what the hazards are, what the concerns are. And we speak with the community in regards to that, what their concerns are, to make sure those are captured too. Everyone goes through that, gets a sticker, if you will, so we know who's gone through, who hasn't gone through this orientation to ensure, to ensure that everyone has gone through who is working on site. Beyond that, there'll be signage put up on the exterior of the fence so that people can identify and know what's going on. On that notification, we'll also outline noises or odors that you may hear. You know, as construction's going on, it's loud, you know, there'll be equipment there or other machinery. So we want to make sure that everyone understands that fully and that's what's going on. So that'll be some boards that'll be put on, so you can, we call them expect boards, so you understand the activities that are happening on site. At no time will there be any cross-mingling of the public and craft workers because they will all be contained within our site fence.
All right, any, any questions on the board?
Sorry. I just had a, so is construction year-round, weather dependent? So construction will be happening while schools and such?
It's year-round, yes.
And there's no, I guess there's not much you can do about it, but is there any mitigation for noise disrupting when classes are in session?
So there's always constant communication. You know, in this particular case with the school, we do a lot of schools. We're actually one of the largest school builders in Massachusetts. So we do a lot of schools. We understand the concerns of the community and of the school and of the children. That's what's most important. So there'd be a lot of communication between my superintendent on site and the principal or even the school department if need be, so everyone fully understands the activities going on.
Yeah, so and to add to that, we do have vibration monitoring stations on site to just monitor the vibrations. We also have hours of like no noise on site. We also have blackout hours of when there's pickup and drop-off. We won't be coming in and out of the site as well. So all of those parameters are set with the school and the community just so that we know the hours of operations for us.
And with that, that'll be written into contracts. So as we get a sub, whether it's the site contractor, the plumber, the electrician, they will all know these are the hours when you can't get deliveries. These are the hours you can't make, you can't do certain activities. So they'll know that because it'll be written into their contracts.
And staff members will also have all this information at hand, so they'll know what to do during what lessons they could have at certain times of the day?
Staff members meaning school or meaning?
Staff in the building. Staff in the building.
Yes.
Okay.
And that'll be posted on the website and it'll be posted in the school as well, so.
For daily changes if needed?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we do daily changes if they're needed, but typically it's a weekly update. It's a Word document for the most part of the activities that were expected to be, that are expected to be happening following the week on site.
Okay.
Post that the week prior, so that way if there's any concerns or any issues, we can answer them.
And just to add to that, Emery Andrew again. Colliers, project leaders, we will also be on-site monitoring and have constant communication with our contractors, our partners, and the end-users, the school department, everyone that's in the building as well. So we'll make sure to filter that constant communication as well.
Thank you. Any members?
I have a question in regard to the traffic pattern. During construction, the drop-off, pick-up? Sorry about that. The traffic padding, pattern for the buses will be the blue line going?
It goes around the existing?
Existing building, right.
Yes.
And the parents will be going on the yellow line all the way around.
That's correct, yeah.
Is that road a dirt road at that point?
No, it's going to be made at, it will be binder. So it'll be asphalt. Sorry. So the road around the, the construction will be binder asphalt. So it'll be in almost finished condition.
Okay, so that has to be maintained for potholes and so forth during?
Yes, during the course of construction, it will be maintained.
Okay. You said that the pattern would be good for the parents, I guess, to get them used to going that direction. But the buses will be going in an opposite direction once the school's completed. Is that correct?
Right, and it, for the buses, it's staying the current route that they're taking right now. So there's no changes to what they're doing currently.
Thank you.
So just to carry on to the next couple of slides, what we have is just when the envelope and interiors and exterior is going up, the traffic patterns will remain the same. The school buses will go around the existing building. Parents and teachers will go around the loop. All entrances and exits will be maintained and there won't be any changes at this point. During the demolition and site phase, we are going to then turn over the building to the school. This would be the summer of 2027. And this will be the time that the school will be moving in, getting training and getting ready to start in fall 2027. The fence that was around the school, the new school, is going to get relocated to around the existing school. And that will be the parameters of construction going forward. And we will be building within that fence. The traffic pattern will be the traffic pattern that will remain during the school year. So the road around the new school will be accessible. For buses, the bus route will be accessible and the car route around the school will also be accessible.
Estimated time of how long it will take to demolish the existing, existing building?
The existing building will start to be demolished after the last day of school in June 2027. And it's projected to be done September 2027.
Now at this time, we'd like to review the stormwater management section.
Any questions on the board?
And I'd like to introduce Gary from Vertex.
Gary DeBlois from the Vertex Companies, and that's spelled D-E-B-L-O-I-S. So what I'll do is just give a quick overview of the existing stormwater conditions out at the site as well as the post-development conditions at the site and show the results of our analysis on the, on the early design stages. What you can see on, on the screen and in your packets here, we've broken the site down, the existing site down into multiple existing drainage areas, EDAs, based on where runoff is going in that current condition. EDA 4, which is shaded blue, currently runs off into the municipal drainage system that runs along Broad Street, down Forest Ave, River Road, and off to the Blackstone River. The remainder of the site, which is EDA 3, as well as two off-site areas. EDA 2 is a handful of adjacent properties to the south which discharge to the site as well as a portion of Broad Street which runs off onto the site as well. There is no outlet for any of those areas. So every drop of rain that falls within one of those EDAs infiltrates the site. There are two existing drywells on the site. It's shown in a box in the southern portion in orange. All runoff and paved areas drains to that, goes into those. At times, we've heard reports of some flooding that goes on during heavier rain events. But all that water doesn't end up infiltrating the ground in that condition. Jumping into the proposed conditions. So our goal here in the design is to provide peak flow reduction across the site as well as to provide treatment of runoff in accordance with the DEM requirements. What we've shown here is same type of breakdown using proposed drainage areas rather than existing. And each of those runs off to a different area. Along the southern portion of the site, which is in blue, there's a yellow box there. That is an underground infiltration system. There are three of them across the site. Runoff is collected throughout the site through a series of catch basins and conveyed through pipes to those underground chambers where we will infiltrate the majority of runoff entering the site. As we went through that analysis, it was, it was a challenging site to work with with most of the runoff currently infiltrating the site. But we were able to, thankfully for great soils at that site, infiltrate a tremendous amount of water through those three systems and reduce peak flows. The storm events analyzed ran from the two-year storm event through the 100-year storm event. The two-year storm event, we were able to reduce peak flows by 30%. And for the 100-year storm, we were able to reduce peak flow runoff by 11%. So that's, that's the quick breakdown. I'm happy to answer any other questions or get into as much detail as you guys would like.
Any questions on the board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Laine, L-A-N-E, with AI3 Architects. AI3 Architects. So we'd like to conclude by going over the proposed building design. We have the floor plans and exterior renderings to show our intent for the final design condition. And I'll begin with the floor plans. So part of the site design effort was shifting the building further south was also looking at regrading to bring the main entry closer to the Broad Street level to create an open and accessible main entry point, which you can see to the right of your, of the page where that red arrow is. So that, that right side is facing east that is running, or facing Broad Street, rather. And that will be kind of our prominent front of the building with that main entrance adjacent to the administration and nurses' suite for a secure entry point for students and guests. Our overall concept of the building layout is to have the more collaborative central spaces such as media center, art, and STEM in the core, middle of that first floor with the classroom spaces and special education spaces wrapping the perimeter. So that allows, you can see the classrooms in the light and dark blue. All of those will have natural lighting from the exterior. And then that pink and purple zone is that shared collaboration space. Moving to the lower level now. So this is, again, part of that grading keeps the lower level down at what's currently the baseball field. And we've located the double-height gymnasium and student dining on that level so that students have direct access to that north place space, secure from any of the traffic or parking that would be more to the east and south of the site. So the red arrow in this image is that secondary entrance that's at that lower level. And that would be the primary use for after-hours programs. So again, thinking of security, keeping the academic wing separate from this more public space at that lower level. In the purple there, we also have the stage connected to the gym, which is in that orange. And so that would open up to the gym for any after-school events or performances. Moving back up, so that, so that lower portion is the double-height spaces I mentioned. And then moving back up to the upper levels, the kind of south portion of the building is that three-story academic wing. So the intent there was to keep the three-story portion more towards Broad Street and away from the abutters and keep that two-story portion lower and so that that would be also further removed, but that would be what the neighbors would see parts of through the landscaping. Is that lower? the landscaping, is that lower two-story building. At this three-story building, we have similar program stacking. The classrooms wrap the perimeter, and we distribute the special education spaces per floor, so that all grade levels can have easy supporting program nearby. On the third floor, we look at the same layout, the classrooms wrapping the perimeter, but we've stepped the building in. So again, trying to think about the massing and how that's going to be experienced from both Broad Street and the surrounding neighbors. So this third-story portion is smaller and stepped back on all sides, which we'll be able to start to see in the exterior renderings. So starting off with, this is the view from Broad Street, so this is your main entrance there with the, you can see the blue canopy. The building is primarily brick material, responding to the civic buildings currently in Cumberland, respecting that kind of more traditional material, but mixing that with a more modern design, incorporating opportunities for color and through the metal panels, and you can see the accents of the blue and the kind of warmer oranges and yellows around the windows. So trying to find that balance of something more playful for an elementary school, but still sophisticated and modern, knowing that it is a new school design. Moving in closer, so this is that front entrance in that kind of main facade of the building. We can see more of that academic wing, so all of those colored windows there, those are all classrooms that all get natural light from the exterior. You can see the bus drop-off loop to the front and the large open space for student circulation, so that'll be all the students walking in from Broad Street, coming in this main entrance here. And then to the right, that one-story portion is where that admin wing is, so having visibility from a security standpoint right at the front of the school there. Okay. Oops, too far. Okay, so we have a few kind of more zoomed-out aerial views to wrap up. I'm just moving around the building, showing where, more towards the southwest corner, that's really taking a look at that three-story academic portion, so looking at how we're stepping up as we move further back, really kind of pushing that three-story portion further away from what you'd perceive from street level. And you can also see that ring road looping around the edge of the site on this west To the north, this is that open field space, and as well as the playground area and the painted pavement zones, this whole portion will be that fenced-off area that will be open for play during the school day. That two-story portion to the back there, that's the gymnasium, so those doors come straight out to that green space. And zooming into that kind of north portion a little bit more, so that glass zone next to the gym, that'll be that after-hours entrance, so there's a small plaza there for outdoor learning, and that would be the direct access from, for recess as well. So creating opportunities for circulation for the students to get to these outdoor spaces without having to cross paths with traffic was a priority there. So we've also, again, incorporated mostly brick around this building, but introduced those pops of color at the window locations on this north side, as well as that southern primary face of the building. I think that is a 360 of the building. Any questions on the plans or renderings?
I have a question. Right now, I understand the student population's a little over 500?
Right now, it's in the 300s, 300.
374.
We are designing for 576.
So how long is it going to take for the school to get to that particular population? What's, what's the estimate?
Anne Marie, so currently, you know, the schools right now, they're, they're over capacity, and there is a need for, you know, more space for the students. So there would be a combination of, you know, possibly redistricting as well to these areas. So there is a need today, pretty much.
I guess, what is the projected life of this building? I might be more for the superintendent, I don't know.
Right.
Hi, good evening. Phil Thornton, T-H-O-R-N-T-O-N. In terms of enrollment, over the next three years, we're going to see another around 100 students, K to five, coming in. Currently, as you know, we have a renou, an addition completed at Cumberland Hill, and that school's pretty much at the, at the full mark, if you will. Ashton was done last year, as you know. Once again, addition, renovation, pretty much at that point. Garvin, addition, renovation, pretty much full. It's a good problem to have. Most towns are losing enrollment, we are gaining enrollment. Who did I forget? Cumberland Hill, Ashton, Garvin, Community, being done this year. That's the largest footprint, right, for our current location. We did an addition there, and that'll be put online next year. So when you're done, you have a four-track school in the north at Community, a four-track school in the south at BF. Right now slated for around 576. As I mentioned, we would be redrawing the boundaries and pulling from the south to the north. It takes a lot of pressure off of the schools in the middle. But at the current rate over the next 10 years, I believe we're looking at an 8% enrollment gain. So that, that's good news.
Okay, I understand that. I just wonder if the building's going to be able to handle any increase over a period of time. I mean, we don't want to have to be renovating or adding to the building in five or 10 years, is my point. So you're projecting an 8% growth? And, okay, so, I can't, I can't figure it out quick enough how that's going to relate to the size of the building.
I would say, yes, we'll have the room. Yes, we'll have some room.
Okay, I'm going to hold you to it.
Yes.
I have a couple landscaping questions.
Mr. Zuck.
Thank you. The, the pedestrian walkway up to Kilburn Street, I know that's quite a slope up to Kilburn Street, will the walkway be, will the slope of the walkway be gentle enough to be wheelchair-friendly?
Yes, that will be regraded so that it's an accessible route from Kilburn down to the, down to the school site.
Excellent, thank you. And sort of somewhat related, considering the residential neighbors to the north and the west, I see trees, of course, in the, in the plan, but could you speak to what the neighbors will be seeing as they're looking towards the school? Those, those trees, will they be more level with the school, or with a, will they be built kind of at the top of that hill on the west, or?
So the trees that are very dark green along the property line are existing trees that will remain at the top of that slope. As we start to slope down into the site, there will still be a grade drop, because it's significant there. There will still be a grade drop, even though we are filling the site generally to bring the school pad up to whatever elevation, I don't know what it is exactly, but it'll still be lower, that road will be still lower than the adjacent properties. So as you're driving around the Loop Road and the service area, it's still kind of tucked down. It will provide more information at preliminary plan to show you all that.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
And actually, I have one more question. I don't know if you're the person to answer this, but I know we're losing a baseball field. I don't know if there's an update on the search for another field somewhere else.
To my knowledge, I'm not sure.
Yeah, at this time, I don't think our team has an update for search of a new baseball field, but related to this project, you know, we're able to have a nice green space for the community, as well as the students for field day and graduation ceremonies.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm curious as to the roof on these buildings, because it appears as though that we in Cumberland have placed Ashton School, for example, I think was the latest, that was a, I call it a truss roof, and I'm just wondering, with all the weight, snow weight and everything else, why isn't this building have a roof on it that is? Curvature. Curved. The sloped, yeah, with, with truss, the, the roof trusses.
So I think, yeah, these last couple, sorry, Samantha Laine, AI3 Architects, I think these last couple of views kind of speak to that. We use the roof to kind of tuck away a lot of the mechanical equipment, so the RTUs are on this upper roof away from view and also kind of pulling, you know, removing, separating the sound. The further we can tuck those into the center of the building. We also have adequate roof drains that will drain all of the water, you know, away and through the underground systems that we have, so we're not running water off down onto the site, like with a pitched roof, that would then lead to, you know, more gutters and that kind of system. We tend to just keep the roofs flat for that.
I think the pitched roofs, from what I gathered, I mean, if Ashton School, I think there's another one, I'm not sure of the school on Manville Hill Road, I think that one is pitched also. Dr. Thornton, is it? Is that a pitched roof on Manville Hill Road, that school? I'm not sure.
I think I'll also just specify, so the roofs do have like a slight slope to keep the water moving. They aren't completely flat, because we don't want any ponding on those surfaces. It's just from, from this scale, they, they do appear flat. You won't see a significant pitch.
Okay.
Phil Thornton again, Cumberland Hill is pitched.
It is, okay, thank you, thank you, sir. Will there be a time during this process that we will find out the design of the interior of the classrooms as to what's in the classes, or is there a time that this is going to be presented to us?
Sure, absolutely. We can include that in the preliminary plan review.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, gentlemen? Do we have anybody in the queue? I'm sorry, the public, anybody in the, sitting in the audience that would like to come up and say a few words? Don't be bashful, come on up. Nobody? Nobody? All right, so I'll close the public hearing at?
I'm sorry, Mr. Costa, I just meant to start with the people present. We do have one person on Zoom. So if, if you're out there on Zoom and you'd like to speak to this matter, please hit the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, and you can speak. So, no, Mr. Costa, we don't have anyone to speak to.
Thank you, Mr. Mordka. Okay, and I'll close the public meeting, hearing to at 7:35, and leave any other comments up to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll just say that I appreciate the design. I think it is a really good design. It's obviously a huge upgrade to the existing campus, and I think the, the opportunity to take some of that traffic off Broad Street will be incredibly helpful. I've had, over the past couple of weeks, I normally don't come down this way in the morning, but the last couple of weeks I've had meetings down here, so I've had to come. And of course, the timing has worked out, that's when BF Norton kids are going in. So it's either avoiding the BVP traffic or the BF Norton traffic, and so I've gotten stuck in those traffic jams a couple of times. Not onerous, but you know, it adds an extra 10 minutes or so with kids crossing the street and buses coming out and all that kind of stuff. I did try taking the back way one day, thinking I was going to be smart, and I hit the train, so I got stuck by the train for 10 minutes, but, but anyway, with the additional parking and the, the big loop that allow for more stacking, I think anything we can do to take traffic off of Broad Street with so many schools in this area, I think is a good thing. I know that the, this part of the town often feels like the, the forgotten stepchild of Cumberland, and that they don't get nice things, so this is a very nice thing to have in this area of the town, and as the superintendent said, I think, planning for the future and having a little bit of breathing room, so hopefully, you know, there probably will have to be one more big redistricting, I would think, once this school is online, but hopefully then families will kind of get a breather and not have to have so much shuffling around, because there'll be enough space to accommodate future growth. So overall, I, I think from a master plan level, it, it all makes perfect sense, and I congratulate the team and the, the school department on all the work they've done, and I think it's, it's a good start.
I'd like to commend everybody that came up this evening and said a few words, and to all of you, I think you're doing a great job. I mean, I've never had so much paperwork in front of me in, in years. But I'm jealous, it's a, the school looks like it's going to be pretty neat, pretty neat, and so congratulations to all of you, and fine, nice job. Dr. Thornton, same to you. Okay, having you said that, do we have a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the master plan as presented for BF Norton Elementary School, as it is consistent with the goals and purposes of the comprehensive plan, based on the findings of fact in the Planning Department's memo to the Planning Board dated February 19th, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? Second, right here, Mr. Sir, you have a second? Okay, hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? So anybody, questions? Does it, motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Zuck, okay, thank you.